As possible, with extension of the right walk in left. A great idea.
Right.
That it?
Unless you have other questions.
Anybody from the board have any questions on Mr. Scott? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony just given by Mr. Scott?
Thank you.
All right, next witness, sir.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Please go forward.
My name is Val Welsh.
W E L L I S C H. Let me spell your name, sir. Please raise your right hand. You saw and you saw the testimony you're about to give in this manner will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
I did.
Again, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
First name is Val, second, sorry, W E L L I S C H. I'm an architect in New York, and my license is in good condition and all. I've testified before a lot of groundships. You want the list?
Just three, local.
Westfield, Cranford, Springfield, Short Hills, living in Moretown.
Okay, thank you.
Try to.
I just want to confirm those were provided to the board with the application.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you, sir.
I need that, but.
The reason I ask, had they been changed, do others mark that? So that's the only reason why.
I'll make it like short and sweet.
Yeah, they should have.
So can you turn that off or something, please?
So, the proposed addition is right here, the halley-like house shape. And this is the garage, which is already along the lines today. This is the breeze lane we were talking, Mr. Scott was talking about before, and now it's the mudroom. The street is over here and over here. And the reason to do the addition over here was because Mr. Gobbo has difficult his climb stairs. So, and I think you have the medical pros to them. And that was the reason why we put it over here. The total addition is about four hundred and ninety-five square feet, something like that. So, didn't ask me any questions, you won.
I think I had some questions about the exterior elements, the siding, is it going to match the existing?
Yes. The siding is going to be the same as the siding, the road, same direction. All right, we don't want to. It doesn't matter if you don't see much on the street or from the neighbor on the east and the neighbor from the north. The north may be, yes, but the east is not going to say anything. It's pretty much the same. And from the street, you don't see anything. If you look at the elevations that I have over here. This is the front elevation, you don't see anything. Everything is the same as it is now. And if you look from them, from the other street, this is the garage doors. This used to be the breeze lane, and now it's the mudroom with the door. You see a little bit of roof over the new kitchen, all right, popping in the back, but this is like a bird's view almost. So, meaning like you stand at the level of the house, but in real life, I don't know if you're going to see that. Where it is. But yeah, the material is going to be all the same.
So never the case, you're still going to match everything.
Never again. It's not going to be easy, because there's the old siding, but all fine.
To extend possible.
Yep. That's what I can.
Anybody from the board have any questions on Mr. Welsh?
No.
Mr. Welsh, have you dealt with many of expansions like this?
About fifty, maybe.
Fifty year older people? No, no, sorry, sorry.
I do, I do.
Dan's not here, I'm the oldest one in this.
Almost any age, overall, like twenty.
No, because we were looking, we had the application like this several years ago, I remember, bench raise application. And as we were predicting that we're going to see more and more older people try to consolidate and live on one floor.
I have, not many, I would say, like this, but I do. But additions a lot. Everybody is.
Yeah, because I know my wife and I.
It gets running out of land, so.
I'm trying to buy a house in Southern Ohio. So maybe expansion is the way to go. Because I told my wife, I said, look, I put four thousand steps on, onto that.
Give me my car later.
I put four thousand steps on and never left the house. She said he must have been doing laundry, so, yep. But, you know, we've looked at it, we've seen several houses in town that have had experiences like that. Additions put on. I was just thinking about, you're going to put it over the patios, the patio is sturdy enough?
The patio is going to be removed. They have new foundations. Whether it's there or not.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Welsh. Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony just given by Mr. Welsh? Okay.
Thank you.
Summation?
Yeah, do you have anything further to say in support of your application, any summation?
Before you do that, there's just two comments I wanted to clear up. I had a comment about that the plans would be modified, the city sidewalks damaged during construction.
Absolutely.
Right? And exterior lighting will conform with the Verord. There you go.
Ordinarily, what I will do is I'll say that the condition of approval, the Amazon client will approve, will be subject to the, to the review and approval of the engineer and planer. I have one other question, you talked about, not in any way critical, you talked about a physical infirmity that was.
I actually bought the house because the nest of bedrooms on the first floor. I had chimney replacements and a hip replacement. So, that's why I can walk around, it's like going upstairs, down the stairs, even getting out of the chair. I still play golf, though.
You have cocked it.
But, yeah, that, I mean, all I wanted to say was, I bought the house three years ago. And it's a totally different house. If you saw the pictures, I don't know if you ever saw the house before to where it is now. You had mentioned the siding roof, they're three months old. I did all the siding, all the roof, all new windows, all new landscaping. I mean, people, neighbors come up to me and thank me for how nice the house looks now.
I think I said it was well maintained.
Yeah.
I did check it out. I agree with what you said.
Yeah, twice a year I have them come in, do the beds, and, yeah, so, I love it now. Really good. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone from the audience have any comments about the application? In the record, please state your name and address.
John Hadley, eight Lori Drive, we're the northern neighbors that we refer to. Originally, we thought we, you know, we turned in a letter, but didn't realize that you have to actually present it, because we have friends in from out of town, so.
Let me do this.
Sure.
Please raise your right hand. You saw and you saw the testimony you're about to give in this manner will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please keep your address.
Yes, John Hadley, H A B L E Y, eight Lori Drive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hadley, you're the one.
So we received notice of the proposed expansion requested by our neighbor and approved the seven twenty-seven twenty-two report by Cole and Associates. We don't generally have a problem with a neighbor's desire to do as they wish with their property, as long as it doesn't infringe on others' properties or degrade the appearance of the neighborhood. In this case, we request that approval be made contingent on some of the recommendations by Cole and Associates as outlined in their report. It's stated in the report, item number seven, based on our site inspection, the property is well maintained. It's likely this is based on a single observation as the property has been only sporadically maintained. While it's currently in reasonable shape, I have attached some photos from midsummer two thousand twenty-two when it had not, nothing, it had done for about six weeks in a row. We feel it be appropriate to create contingent requirements rather than rely on verbal assurances. Here are the items we would hope the board would see are dealt with appropriately. Basement flooding has been an issue in the neighborhood. During Hurricane Ida, many properties in the immediate neighborhood, including the Sardobos, experienced basement water depths of several feet. Cole and Associates recommends increasing the slope of the property, which we would support. Since the expansion will increase both the impervious coverage of property and rooftop drainage, we see requirements to prevent potential water issues as of critical importance. It appears from Cole and Associates' report that the existing fence is extending into our property. With such extensive work being done, it seems reasonable to also require that this be remediated. The report notes that there might be a need for additional AC compressors. If so, we would appreciate that their recommendation be made a requirement that those not be added on the eastern facade where there are already two AC compressors. To preserve the character of the neighborhood, we would ask that any additional lighting on the outside of the addition be minimized. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
You have recommended a report with regard to the compressors, as you know?
Yes.
With regard to the fence, Mr. Gobbo.
Yeah, the rear of the tarp, but, I'm sorry.
Will that be remedied?
Yeah, that's part of the shed. That was there when I moved there. I just replaced everything that was break, broke. The place looked like, like it was abandoned, and you know that. That place was horrible before I moved there.
Inside, yeah.
Outside didn't. I cut down thirty trees. Thirty. Thirty trees I had to cut down in that property. And the reason why he says it's not maintained is because the previous owners had a mimosa tree. And they just cut it at the base, they left all the roots in. So every couple of weeks, shoots would come out of the ground, and then we'd have to go in there and pull them out. I was away for two weeks, the six weeks that, two of those weeks I was away in Aruba on vacation. Tony, you remember, I called you when I was there. So, it's maintained. I plan to rip all the roots out. But I'm not going to do any of that until all the construction is done.
Yeah, sir, is that satisfactory? Is that representation satisfactory?
Well, it's hard to say. In terms of the maintenance, I mean, we observe, you know, it's, right now it looks decent, but there have been tons of weeds and overgrowth on a regular basis up until now.
He's representing, and he's going to take care of it. So he has to take him on his word. And if he doesn't, then.
Remember, too, the failure of maintained property is also a code enforcement issue. It's a municipal ordinance enforcement issue. And we do have, we have officials to deal with that. I mean, it's very hard for the board to make, you know, keeping the property clean as a condition of approval.
Oh, yeah, I didn't intend that. That was just kind of an example of why we would like, we would like to see some of these things be requirements as opposed to just assurances that they will be done.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good. But you should know that if for some reason something's left out or whatever, it's not being handled, you definitely should, okay, definitely make that call to, you know, to the appropriate official. Or, in the worst case scenario, the police, but that's generally how it would be handled in the borough or any other municipality.
Right. So, the fence is going to be moved? Okay. Because that was something I had understood was not.
Yeah, I understand that it won't be now. On that one, I'll make, I'll recommend to the board be conditioned approval.
Fence in the shed. Stuff like that. Yeah, I'm happy.
All right, done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I say one more thing? There was only twelve inches of water in my basin. During that storm.
You're lucky.
This much, where everybody in the town had water, so.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Any comments on the application and testimony? Someone like to move?
I'll move it with conditions. Stay.
I'll just say we're going to move, close the public portion. Move, say that we close the public portion, all in favor?
I don't know.
Okay, closed, carried, okay. Word, which pleasure?
I think it's, I walk the property, as I always do when I make these applications. And I think this is an improvement, allows people to live in their house. The neighborhood is pretty darn nice, actually.
Oh, yeah.
When I was there, the house was fun. You know, we all had times when we can't get to where we are, it's that happens to all of us at one time or another, so I don't want to consider this as a zoning issue. But I think that this, again, is a simple way, it makes a house more durable for the homeowner occupants. And overall, I think we should proceed with the conditions that we just talked about. Let's get it done.
Our conditions are compliance with Mr. Cole's report and remediation of the fence.
Yeah, I'll move it that way.
Move it that way?
And the shed, remediation of the shed.
Have you, have you further discussion?
I'll just say, I did tour the house, because I was looking for a house around the same time I guess you were, and it has been an improvement.
Thank you, thank you. They take pride in that.
Yeah.
What we did there.
Just so you won't be confused, I will also include standard conditions in my resolution that requires, you know, that requires you pay your fees, you're paying, you know, you have to keep, you have to make sure taxes are paid. You comply with any other governmental requirements, state, federal, county, in addition to anything else the borough may impose. Those are all conditions of the approval in addition to the ones we just pointed out.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Move on, please.
Parted air.
Yes.
Reverte carbonous.
Yes.
Brianna Deminsky.
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin.
Yes.
Rich O'Neil.
Yes.
Ed L.
Yes.
Tom Flores.
Yes.
Karen. Good luck.
I will prepare a resolution or approval that, you know, we'll have that out.
Thank you so much, guys. Real excited.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thanks. Okay, next one, three forty Union Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you? Good evening, board, your professionals. My name is David Himmelman. I represent the applicant. Three forty Union Avenue, L L C. I'm still a little, you have to understand, a little nervous about having eight children. So, I have two, and I don't know how I could deal with eight, and I wish him all the luck in the world.
I was hoping he wasn't seeking relief from eight children.
Think that might be.
I don't want to think it was college building.
Oh, because he said it all along. That was one of the times, like I relate that.
In any event, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present this application. As you were aware, this application is for preliminary planning, site plan subdivision, and use D variance and bulk C variances. And for the record, although our professionals will identify it, it's lot twenty-seven, lot one oh two, on the current tax map, of course, here in Somerville. And it's known as, as you know, as three forty Union Avenue. The property is located in your R two single-family resident zone district. The entire property is approximately seventeen thousand three hundred and three square feet, or approximately four acres. As you know, the applicant seeks to redevelop the prior oil repair facility and former gasoline station into five separate, into five unit townhouse development. And we would subdivide the property into five buildable lots, and they will all have designated new lots through the board approval. I'm going to go through a little bit of the, of the district, orient the board, and I know you've, you're all experienced on the proofs that are required for variances, but I thought it would at least set the stage so that your attorney and your planner and engineer could weigh in on that as well. So as I indicated, we seek a D use variances pursuant to the municipal land use law, which is section D one under forty fifty-five D seventy. As you know, as to the permitted uses, it's only single-family dwellings that are permitted in your R two single-family zone. And that's based on your ordinance, section one oh two one hundred and Schedule A permitted uses. Use variance relief is also required under the municipal land use law for a D five maximum density variance, based on a density of seven point two six units per acre, as five units are proposed. Mr. Cole, I want to thank you for going through the use variance relief in your memorandum, and you did an excellent job on that, and I think it helps the board. And I apologize if I'm repeating some of your requirements under your.
I'd like to hear that.
What's that?
I really like to hear that, because people don't appreciate the quality of reports that Michael does.
Now, I.
It's like going to school.
I've been practicing law for, you know, this area for almost thirty-five years, and I've never seen a planner or engineer detail a use variance relief requiring a testimony that should be elicited. So, I thank Mr. Cole for that. In any event, we also seek a D four variance for the maximum floor area, which you know is FAR, as thirty percent is permitted. And we are proposing for each lot thirty-two point two one, and it varies from percentages accordingly, but we need, we need the FAR variance. Again, Mr. Cole did point that out in his memorandum. And the proofs differ for each of those variances, which I will go through. We also seek several bulk C variances for minimum lot area, minimum lot frontage, minimum lot width, side yard setback, the rear yard setback, and improved lot coverage. And although they are, there's a laundry list of those, and again, this varies from board to board, and your attorney may weigh in on this. But in my experience, when you have multiple use variances, in this case, for density and for use, a lot of the bulk variances are assumed as part of the relief. Although we have to put on those, we have to put on the proofs for the D variances, the C variances sort of go, it's sort of like the tail of the dog, if you will. So, we're prepared to put on those proofs, but, and I'll let your attorney weigh in on that, but I think that there's probably enough case law to support that. So, as you know, from your prior application.
Yeah, I was just, I want to interrupt you, sir. Do you see, you've mentioned a D five, a density variances, is there, you know, interesting, a D one, a D four? I just want to confirm you have a D five.
That's my understanding.
Mike, I think if a question comes up, if this is going to be fee simple, and right now you show multiple small lots.
Correct.
And I thought there was some flexibility in your application saying, well, we'll see with the market.
That's correct. I think I noticed that in the event that you and I and your attorney had a discussion about that. So, right now, it would be, you know, fee simple, but we may want to talk to the board about that. Yeah, but I think you pointed that out in your memorandum also.
Right, but I'll just clip once you've done the record that, yes, you have the density, but right, if you go back to one lot, it's a different story.
Different story, correct, you're right.
And you know, the type of property regime would make a difference. We just wanted to get that out.
No, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. So, the applicant is going to testify through our planner, that as you know, for the D one use variance, in particular cases and for special reasons under the MLUL, to grant the variance to allow departure from the regulations to permit you to reuse a principal structure in a district restricted against such use. And that's what we have, obviously, have in this case. So as you know, we've got to support the use variance, and we have to substantiate it, Mr. Cole, again, did an excellent job pointing that out, that the applicant has the burden of proof to show both the positive and negative criteria. And the special reasons, as you know, from the requirements of municipal land use law, is referred to generally as the positive criteria. The special reasons which courts generally recognize to support a D one variance include the following, that the use is inherently beneficial, that the site is particularly suited for the use, and advances one or more of the purposes of planning stated in the municipal land use law. Again, as Mr. Cole pointed out in his memorandum, the review standards for the D one use variances are those required in the Nidichi case, which I know you're all familiar with, as to the special reasons to support the relief sought. As to the positive criteria to support a D one variance, the applicant's planner will testify, the proposed project does in fact carry out the purposes of zoning as step forth in section D two under forty fifty-five D. As to the negative criteria, as you know, no variance or other relief under the municipal land use law may be granted under that provision, including a variance or other relief involving hardly beneficial use without showing that the variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zone ordinance. The applicant's planner will testify that the variance can be granted without such detriment to the surrounding areas, as there's no significant traffic, additional noise, digital impact, or environmental impacts from the project. Moreover, our planner will provide testimony that there's no significant harm to the master plan and zoning ordinance. And as you'll hear from, as you'll hear from the applicant directly, as you know, this is a site that is in quite need of rehabilitation, there have been environmental issues, again, which Mr. Cole pointed out to. And as part of this application, so the board approve it, obviously, the property will be fully remediated from an environmental standpoint. All regulations will be satisfied under the NJDP, and there's already been extensive environmental investigation, both as the soil and groundwater. So, again, I think you'll hear from the planner that this is one of the positive criteria elements, so that the environmental issues will be addressed and obviously remediated to allow for this type of development. In the FAR relief, again, as Mr. Cole pointed out, the applicant need not show the site is particularly suited for more intensive development. Rather, an applicant must show that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the floor area larger than permitted by ordinance. In addition, the applicant's planner will testify, the review standards for establishing, establishing special reasons for the D four variance can be found in the cover trees square case, and not as required by the standards in the Nidichi case. The applicant, thus, the applicant can but need not show the site is particularly suited for more intensive use, but show that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the increased FAR. That gives you an overview and summary of where we are in terms of the relief sought. I have four witnesses tonight. First will be the applicant, Mark Freshy, representing the LLC applicant. I have George Falk from David's Sire, Mark Marion, our architect, and last but not least, John Chadwick, who's our esteemed professional planner. So with that said, I don't have any further opening remarks. The board is not, at this point, we can, I guess, call Mr. Freshy, but the council may.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
So it's not remediated yet?
It will be. It is, I would say halfway around the race track.
Thank you for, thank you for such a thorough introduction.
You're welcome.
Would you like to call your first witness?
Sure. Yeah.
Council, go for it, Paul Jerome.
I was going to say, I have a, I have a ranch home, so I might just go on upstairs.
Take your time now. You raised your right hand, sir. You saw and you saw the testimony you're about to give in this manner will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Mark Freski, F R E S C H I.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freski. Counsel, you're a witness.
Thank you so much, Mr. Freshy. Freshy, good evening. If you would just orient the board, so if you would explain your relationship to the applicant, I believe you are a member of this LLC applicant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you do have a court, are you just here to see if you can correct?
Yes.
Great, okay. And when did you, when did the applicant LLC acquire this property?
A little over two years ago.
Okay. Now, you are also in the environmental services industry, is that correct?
Yes, I have an environmental. Yes, I have an environmental engineering firm, the Services of Mediation. I've been doing it for over sixteen years, so.
Variance. Okay.
These properties don't scare me.
So just, I, I know I oriented the board to the application, but if you could just explain generally what you're looking to do here from a development standpoint. And then I wanted to ask you some questions about the environment.
Okay, so basically we have a repaired garage that has contamination in the soil and groundwater. And we plan on tearing down the building and putting a good development in right there for five townhomes. The residential over there is, all the properties around it look beautiful. I mean, you have the ZI-SORT right there on Union Avenue. Been there for probably a decade.
Fair enough. And as Mr. Cole, one of Mr. Cole's questions, I guess, is will, will there be a homeowner association? And how will that be formed and what responsibilities would they have? Should the application be approved?
So we've already retained an attorney for setting up an HOA. Nothing can be done until the approval. But I don't know.
Great. Did they send the letter over?
No, we didn't send the letter.
John Sullivan.
John Sullivan, yes.
Yes. So we've already retained him and, and once we get our approval, we'll start the process to get the HOA. And we're, we're most likely planning on renting, you know, for, I don't know, maybe ever. But right now we're, we're going to subdivide individual. We have the latitude later. I know there's multiple different ways you can do it. You can even have a condo association and still sell off it, not even subdivide. We want an individual lot so they can be responsible for the individual lot. But for now, we're, we're planning on renting these units.
Fair enough. And the, and the, the association would be responsible to maintain the common elements, correct? And they would be outlined in your governing documents and bylaws.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Now turning to the environmental aspects of this. I don't want to get highly technical. I know that's your business. But if you could just give a brief overview of the historic contamination and what you've done to date and what ultimately is your goal, which I presume is to get what everybody understands final clearance from DEP, went through mediations completely. So if you could go over that for us.
So the property here was a gas station. It had a series of tanks that were removed prior to us. They did some work, but soils were over, you know, residential standards. We have installed over a dozen monitoring wells. We use compliance averaging, decent polygons to use soil averaging to bring it below the standard. And we're ready to issue the REO for soils. When we get approved.
If you could just explain.
What an REO.
Sorry, I apologize.
I'm aware, but if you could explain what that is and so that the board understands under the record.
So a lot of people know of NFAs, which are no further actions that DEP used to issue. Now the only issue for underground storage tanks is the only way you can get an NFA from the state. Circa two thousand ten, eleven, the LSRP's licensed site mediation professionals were brought in. So they have to conform to the rules and regulations of the state, but they sign off on it and issue an RAO, which is a response action outcome. It's the same thing as an NFA stating that everything has been compliant with DEP's regulation. And you're, you're saying that the, the, the site is clean. So we're ready to issue the, for soils. Groundwater, we were going to address when the building's demolished, we are going to actually remove soil. We're going to actually put chemox, which are chemicals in the ground to remediate the soils more rapidly. Instead of doing a long-term control plan, which long-term remediation just naturally attenuates. We're going to accelerate and we can start a development and let the wells clean up. And eventually, once they're clean, we will issue an REO for groundwater.
So is it fair to say that should the board act fairly upon the application, the applicant wouldn't object as a condition of any approval for the, for the applicant to adhere to all environmental requirements, including to receive an REO, whatever is necessary for groundwater remediation? Is that fair to say? Yeah?
Absolutely.
Great.
Right, so remedial institutional controls aren't anticipated right now. D restrictions, you don't, you see it being cleaned up.
D restrictions are not even a factor. We're ready to issue the REO for soils. Groundwater, there might be a temporary CEA, but that's just because of how DEP works. But I'm pushing to clean this up as quickly as possible. It might take a year from when we put the chemicals in the ground. Groundwater is a thousand times more stringent than soil standards, so it takes a little longer. But I can go the route of just letting it naturally attenuate. But I don't want to have an environmentally toxic property or anything else. I want to clean it up and have a clean.
Clean title.
Yeah.
Clean title.
Clean title. That's it.
Fair enough. So at the end of the day, you would have, you're ready to issue the REO for soils, yes?
Yes.
And that ultimately you would get, the groundwater, the groundwater standards would be met. And you're saying that they would, you would accelerate that through some chemical injections.
Well, we're going to remove some soil and do chemical injections.
Fair enough.
And as part of the process, once we demo the building, we're going to be doing it. Because some of the, the soils are below, but they are still impacting groundwater. So when we remove the building, we have to excavate in that area. So it makes sense. We'll have the equipment there, we'll dispose it, put chemox in and follow that.
Might use class three A standards for groundwater?
No.
You gotta use two A?
It'll meet DEP's requirements. We're not the fine lines. I will never buy a property in the fine lines.
Any hit is a, is a, is an exception.
Yeah.
Any hit.
Any, anything. So you're, you're looking for, everybody's not going to conform. That's. We have a law, or at least a little drop of gas when you do that.
Fair enough. Mr. Fresh, is there anything else you want to cover about the environmental or any of the issues you raised or you think is covered already?
No, I, I really like Somerville and I think it's a good project. You know, it'll really uplift that, that property on the corner there. View of it. So it definitely goes with the street right there. So. That building, I can't wait to come down.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Fresh. I'd love to board for your special.
Anybody from the board have any questions, Mr. Fresh?
Yeah, I've got one question. How do you know that contamination is only from your site? That was a very active area.
It's a very good question.
I would love it to come up to somebody else's property and then. So a process we use is, it's almost like stepping out. We'll, we'll, we'll find where the source is. We'll step out. As the, as we step out, the contamination drops, we know it's coming from us. If, if, at one point it starts going up again for those analytes, that's when you see there's a potential of a co-mingle bloom or an issue off-site. In this case, we're pretty confident it's coming from us. And we've put in a series of wells. We're actually still waiting for clearance from Bridgewater. They told me that I, I can't put more than one well in their town. So they said, could you move it? And I said, I could move it if you feel. They said, no, in another town. So. Where we're getting there, I have already do NJDOT approval, so we're going to put one in the right way. And then one, they're both in Bridgewater, but one approval from their town.
I heard you say you're going to rent these or sell these?
I believe we're going to rent them. I think that's where the market's going. And I would, I like Somerville. I think it's a great town. You know, they've done a lot over the past ten years or so.
So you're proposing five individual lots?
Yes.
So that each lot is going to be owned by a LLC?
Correct.
And you can sell those off as you go or?
If we want to lay it down, I, I don't proceed.
But it is going to be fee simple, five individual lots.
For those that don't know, what's fee simple? It's Mike and I talked about this.
They can sell one, they can sell two, they can sell all five if they like.
Very independent lots.
Okay. And independent interest in land is what they told us at law school.
Exactly.
Right. Buggles of rockets.
There's some challenges maintaining a roof in that scenario. So you don't get a patchwork. So I think we need to discuss how exterior is maintained.
But we're going to have an HOA no matter what. So that'll be part of the HOA bylaws.
To have.
Yeah, so I'll have money in the extra account and I'll pay for the siding.
Would your attorney consider a common area?
Right.
Essentially?
And it would address that, wouldn't it? And, and obviously we would have to submit those covering documents to your attorney to review. If, if that's the condition that the board would suggest.
If the board elects that to be a condition.
Right.
Which I don't think is unreasonable. That, that's fine. I was going to say, so you, you can confirm that the roof, I happen to live in a, I happen to live in a condo complex. So I'm just thinking, the roof would ordinarily be a common area in that situation. And every homeowner is ultimately assessed for maintenance and repairs and upkeep, correct?
Usually, usually it's siding, outside decks, sometimes roofing, sometimes it's a structure. It all depends on how the HOAs.
And that'd be how you'd handle it?
And they, and usually, as you know, primarily the, the owner would be responsible. The, the owner of the, of the unit or the tenant would be responsible for encyclical walls, basically.
Right, correct, yeah.
And I would address the issue of getting to the backyards and doing the maintenance and stuff I brought up about not having access to the garage, the lawnmower and so forth.
Correct.
You're right.
Okay. So how, how will the grants get cut?
We're going to maintain it. If we're renting it, it's going to be on us. We're, we're going to pay the property management company to maintain it. That's any lawn maintenance, weed, any of that stuff.
We're adding the dishes. Yeah, from the garage, there's no door to the backyard from the units. So I raised.
The lawnmower is through your kitchen.
Right. That's what I brought up.
Just either ones. That's it. Back there in the deck.
And it becomes a challenge from the stormwater manager to put a pipe in. Who owns the pipe who maintains it? Because there's, I know George has been thinking about this, but I had some comments that there's some, it looks to be a little challenging to get the stormwater out. And if it's going to be individual ownership, you run into the issue of how do you maintain a slip or swell or pipe if it goes through multiple lots? So I kind of beat that up a little bit in report to try to, I'm glad you flushed that out because that takes a lot of the headache out of it on the maintenance of it. I'll call it the common ground then.
I don't think it could work any other way, quite frankly. Yeah.
Right, we will make the condition that, you know, you're going to establish an HOA and you'll, you'll provide me with the organizational documents to review and approve.
Correct. Including with the master deed and bylaws.
Yes, sir. Anyone from the board have any questions of the testimony you just gave by Mr. Fresh? Anyone from the audience have any que, any questions on the testimony you just gave?
Yes, ma'am.
My house is the only house.
Name, please? Ma'am, could you come forward and give your name and address, please?
I'm Betty Cleary, and I was in school there since Somerville for some of you people.
Those are clear.
Does he still owe you detention like he does?
Oh, my God.
I'm glad to see a project going across the street. I'm just concerned that five townhouses in that small area. And is the garbage going to face my house, the pickup of the garbage? And there are no garages, so the parking.
There is a garage. There are garages.
There are garages.
Yes, there are.
Wonderful. So I didn't know that.
But garbage pickup is going to be out on the street like normal. I have to say that's where it goes.
But is there going to be like a dumpster?
No dumpster. Individual cans, they're going to be responsible, just like every other homeowner. There's not going to be a dumpster in your house.
I was hoping to maybe up the fence or something to hide the garbage can. Like I say, my house is the only house. I've been there twenty-two years and there hasn't been anything nice across the streets. Happy to get out of the townhouses, but I just thought.
Yeah, they have a garage, keep their cans inside. And then when, you know, when they have to put their garbage down, garbage there, it'll go out.
Will you change a, a rural company or will you use municipal?
It'll be municipal, just like any other complex, any other homeowner on the street.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I'm dismissed. Can you go home? George, our next witness is George Falk, and he's our professional engineer. And we would have to have him obviously sworn in and qualified.
Good evening, service. Raise your right hand. You saw we scored the testimony you're about to give to this matter with the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
George H. Falk, F L K A.
Okay. One, just a housekeeping note, counsel, if you don't like, maybe your, your witnesses will remain through the end of the hearing, correct that?
I was joking. I was joking. I'm not, I'm not going anywhere.
I understand people have, sometimes people have all people might need, so.
Fair enough. No, thank you. I'm just going to, I know you all know George, but I just want to record we are qualified. So Falk, can you just briefly put on the record your professional qualifications and your license status? And I know you testified probably more boards than you want to.
I'm currently a professional engineer, stated, dirty, no problems with my, my license. Testified for the board several times and.
You're good.
Thank you.
George, good evening. Did you want to put up, did you want to refer any, I think you've filed plans. If you want to refer them during your testimony.
I'll just work off the rendering if that's all right.
Well, is that, has that been, is that?
Was that filed with the board?
Was that a collared agreement?
Not the collared.
Right, I thought. So should we have that marked?
A six.
A six?
A six.
A six.
Today's date?
Today's date is the nineteenth.
Okay.
And George, before you start, just for the record, and so the board is aware. So you're going to be testifying on the revised plans that were, I believe, submitted by a letter from you September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, obviously. So there's no confusion because there were multiple sets that were, that were submitted for review. I just wanted to clarify that. Is that correct? That's true, okay. Would you give an overview for us of the application, the site plan application and the site layout, including, you know, the, the orientation, the parking, the landscaping, the lighting, et cetera, so that we can go through your, your, your plan? Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm sure the board is aware of the site after the discussion we've had. It's at the Easterly intersection of North Autton Avenue and Union Avenue, which is also State Route twenty-eight. It's to the west, I guess, of Adamsville Road, which is just on the other side of the commercial building. The existing property has probably been improved for almost a hundred years as a service station of some kind. Over those eighty, ninety years, the site's pretty worn out. I think the applicant's going to do a nice job of revigorating this corner. You know, as you're entering into Somerville from, from the east, I think it'll look a nice fresh appearance as you come into Somerville. As discussed, the, the site is basically impervious coverage of rock, gravel, stone, and buildings. The buildings, as discussed by Mr. Fresh, is, is going to be removed. And I think a lot of soil is going to be removed. And get to one of your comments, Mike, about the imperviousness of the site. And I think the removal of a lot of that material is going to help with infiltration of runoff. But we'll get to drainage of the backyards. Again, the building, we have our architect today here and he can discuss his elevation. But one of the items Mr. Cole had brought out was there's a little bit of a trick to the, the end of the driveway. It, it flares off into North Autton Avenue. And instead of having the building parallel with North Autton Avenue, which I think would be just a big block of building, we tried to give it a little flavor and jostled the, the, the building lines around. So you had some relief as you went down the road. And that gave the driveways coming out a little bit of a, a bend into North Autton Avenue. But the driveway entrance and the bend is very, very minimal. And I don't think it would cause any problem with, with any kind of vehicle access into the site. with any kind of vehicle access into the site. The driveways are ten feet wide, cars are around seven feet wide, so there's a lot of, a lot of room there to maneuver. I can go through some of the the comments here, if you like, that would be helpful.
Please.
All right. Now you guys probably wanna see that Yankees game.
Who's they playing?
Now you're referring to Mr. Cole's updated memo, September twenty-sixth?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great.
And 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 Mike, uh just, I'll just go with.
You wanna start on page seven?
Yes, sir.
For you?
Yep, page seven, I N C. Note one, uh we will comply with, number two is a common note. The item was nine, item three is illumination, uh there is a streetlight that we are preserving in the middle of the of the development on on the uh Easterly side of North Autton Avenue, it does have a hall light, uh we propose post-top lights at the end of the driveways. And I guess if if we're were to approve this project, we could condition that we would do an asphalt lighting survey. I see that the we've complied with the twenty-two foot handles at the driveways, if the uh the streetlight handles that.
Yeah, George, I I'm just not a fan of the post-top lights, they always get hit by a car, especially when the snowbys slide into them. And if we have enough illumination out there with the existing streetlights, why put that down? It's obviously the board's decision on whether the, what they're supposing is a two, four-by-four post, right by the sidewalk with a light on it, typically within a couple of feet of this, of the driveway, so they they always get clipped, always get clipped.
My daughter's right there.
So, right, so I'm just saying, George, if we could just baseline the existing illumination and only put lighting where needed?
Yep.
That's worth working to know.
It's a residential project.
Right. Right, right.
Sounds good. Item four, um is is the the parking requirements, uh we consider that the uh the R S I S is requiring twelve spaces, according to Mr. Cole's definition, we're only providing ten spaces. I can put one space on North Autton Avenue, uh to the south end of our project here, so that makes eleven spaces. However, we're gonna do the uh electrical vehi- electric vehicle charging stations in each garage. Uh we're allowed to go eliminate some spaces, so I I do believe that uh we would comply with the parking.
I think what George is saying is the R S I S doesn't allow two, oh, single, a single garage with two stacked cars. In reality, there's enough driveway to stack two cars in front of the garage. So in reality, it complies, but according according to the R S I I S, it doesn't. If it was a two-car garage, it would, it would give you credit for that. But he doesn't get the credit, but I'm I'm just pointing out that it is thirty, over thirty-six feet, the driveways, so you can easily, not easily, but you can stack two cars to get, to provide accommodate off-street parking.
Absolutely.
So I'm not advocating, I'm not saying, I'm saying technically he needs a variance, but practically, he's providing the on-street onsite parking. Right?
Yes, sir.
And back to the charging, I, and Ed might know this, I think it's a U C C requirement now that you have to put a fifty amp plug in every garage to accommodate level-two charging. Then it did, the law changed, uh a new law was acted early this year that said more than five units, you have to provide charging for electric vehicles. And I ask the question of these, there's no parking lot for this, usually a one-day parking lot, you have electric stations. So I think the intent is we can put the fifty amp plug in the garages, I think that meets the intent. We can go through the the legislation, but uh I, you know, what, where did you just go?
We're at, we're at, where do we?
Right.
Where you want? And they do give you credit.
They're gonna give you the credit, right. But I don't know if the fifty amp plug meets the intent of what that rate says, but I'm I'm saying if the U C C covers it.
I just thought they'd do interpretation and run it, and this is gonna be trouble for a couple of years.
The state passes the law, they ask the locals to figure it out. I have spent some time with this law, it does anticipate individual parking. It says five or more units with the anticipation that's a one-day parking lot. Right, so you have a situation, we don't have a big parking lot, and the and the law, as I read it, doesn't address this at all, I heard.
So we're gonna move a little.
Exactly.
Okay, moving on to page eight, item four, performance standards, A, parking and circulation, uh item one, I think we just discussed.
Right.
Uh item two is uh is a concern that the ordinance in the town, you have a fifty-feet triangle from the intersection of right-ofways of Route twenty-eight and North Autton Avenue, which cuts across maybe about ten feet into this last townhouse driveway. So you could park a car in the garage, and you could park a car in the driveway, and not park a car behind that car that's in the driveway. And we could condition that if that's a concern uh for the for this site triangle that is in the ordinance. However, this Route twenty-eight is a DOT road, and they have a different site triangle, which is different than
Right.
what your ordinance is, so uh in semantics, we're not in a site triangle for the the Union Avenue concern, however, according to the ordinance, there is that fifty-by-fifty triangle that a car parked behind the one car.
Because you have a stop sign there, and you take it from the stop.
The car would be ahead of it anyhow. Uh today, the stop sign is way back, uh it's probably thirty feet back from the stop bar that's out there, so today would would be stupid, it would make no sense to park a car there, but uh with the stop bar that we're gonna relocate and the stop sign, uh and and, you know, more natural location, I don't see a problem with site triangle on that.
Right, I I support to the board grant approval, granting the relief, because it it's a borough, it come, it's coming up in a lot of project, uh properties, the parking lots being within the site triangle. So it's not uncommon, and it's, as George pointed out, there re- there's a likelihood of a car there. This is not likely, because you're gonna pull forward, and it's a small area.
Right.
Yes.
So we're not gonna have a limitation on how many cars should be parked in that?
I don't think it's necessary, but it's the board's call.
I think to leave it, the full stop sign, right, it's not you, you gotta stop.
Right. What George is saying is not only what you do on a DOT road, is you come to the type of stop bar, and twelve feet back, you measure the site triangles out using whatever the speed limit is, but if a borough has an ordinance that doesn't comply with that, so.
Getting back to Mr. O'Neal's comment, which I pay, what I think the the onus of that, or the the original reason for that was that a lot of these intersections back
Right.
earlier didn't have stop control, and they wanted that ability to see, but today, I think, just that every intersection, you've got a stop sign, so.
Right.
Okay, um we'll talk about item number three, it's driveways. Item four was uh HOA concerns about the uh the backyard and uh.
Well, we we talked about four, you addressed that.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Uh five is a, yep, is is uh depressed curb that we're gonna report, uh repair on Union Avenue, it's a DOT right-ofway condition, so we have to get permit from the DOT on that. The site lighting, we've just discussed, uh we have the architect here, he's gonna have all residential lighting around the building, that, you know, no commercial big spotlights or anything like that. That's item one, and item two is site lighting. Uh C is stormwater management, item number one is a, is a comment noted, it's uh item number two, uh the existing, the the site is is basically impervious uh throughout the whole site. With this development, we're gonna reduce the impervious coverage on the site, so we're gonna be reducing the runoff from the site. Uh that's gonna have a positive impact on the drainage on North Autton Avenue and on to Union Avenue. The the comment on coefficient of point nine-five, uh that you can talk.
What what George is saying is. The stormwater management is basically saying, don't increase the runoff on North Autton, because there's not too many catchphases. The catchphrase is way south, so try to keep the drainage where where it is.
Sure.
So that we don't have additional runoff onto the residential street, so we don't increase, I I don't know what the capacity of that storm drain is, and I I don't think it's worth doing a study to pick up point one CFS, so I'm asking George just to keep the runoff the same, so we don't have to do that exercise.
Absolutely.
Right. Right.
Can you do it to us?
So I think I carries to, that covers two and three, and we're on page ten, uh ten, and then we have the the curb face discharge, if you can get the the roof, I, there was a some of the units had uh discharged the street and some didn't, so I don't know if you're treating the whole thing as one structure or.
Well, we could, I I wasn't sure about how all the roof drains are going and and, but I I can, I can hand, I can put a roof drain in uh for each one, and then uh if you wanna talk about the backyards, or if you wanna put a drain through the backyards, we can tie into that as well. Uh the backyard is about half the size of this room, but it's uh the size of the backyard, so if you want, we can put a sump drain in the middle of each backyard and tie that in, and then bring that out.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm saying is, to get the curb face discharge, get the roof leaders tied to the street, so we don't have potential icing on the new sidewalk. So he's talking about a couple of leaders going to the street, so I just asked the question, how many leaders, but is he treating it one structure or multiple structures? And then the rear yard, I I don't think there's, for, I don't think the swell or the, there's not grades back there, so I'm saying this is great as a homeowner, if we can just put catchphases on to the same roof leader, and we don't have to swell it out, we can just put catchphases to pick it up, if it's flat.
Yeah, I I would rather do a little sump drain than a swell, because, you know, the swell, that kinda makes you guard
Right.
not really as usable as a drain.
I agree with you.
But if you ground in there, you're replacing soils, right?
Yeah, yeah, which is gonna help a lot with the impervious, with the density of that soil.
It'll absorb more.
Yes, as well.
So it's, some of this will be corrected.
Yep, absolutely.
So probably the less water we chug in the book, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, in fact, we're adding a lot more lawn area than there is today, so we're reducing the impervious.
The idea is, you get down there, three, four feet, most normally you hit that silky play, it's tight. I understand, you know, but the, yes, it'll be, you know, we can get some going in the ground, but I just don't want a swamp after five years, because it silts in and clogs up. I'd rather have a positive drainage outlet, so just from a maintenance.
Sometimes the grades of these pipes, they don't, they don't maintain themselves after a while, they they silt out.
Well, if they're installed right, they're installed right, they should maintain it, they're bedded right.
You said a couple of words, right, Mike, right.
And I think uh that that the D goes to the architect who's here tonight, uh moving on to page eleven, uh E is landscaping. And uh item one and two is basically common noted, Mike, are you guys all right? Uh item three, we we revise tree, whatever you want to uh put out there to to keep uh impacting, keep them impacting the overhead electric lines, we will change the species. Uh item four, uh yes, that's the intended plant, was that Ballmer, Ballmer?
Right.
Uh item five, again, goes back to the HOA, and that's who's gonna uh also have to.
Yeah, I mean, the landscaping's well done, George, I just, I said that, I'm just saying it requires a lot of water, so it goes back to homeowners. It takes off, it it addresses that issue.
Okay. Uh I I, uh letter F, item one and two, uh item one is will comply with the D and B.
Right.
And item two is common noted. Uh G, we have our esteemed planner here tonight for planning. Uh Gung, or G again, I guess, on page seventeen, general comments. Will comply with item number one, which is uh a mill of the whole width of the road for all these utilities we have to put in. Uh item five is the architect. Item three, uh Mr. Freshy discussed the uh the status of the environmental contamination on the site. Uh item four is a fence around the Easterly side and the southerly side of the property, and from what I understand, it's the neighbor's fence, correct? That's all, it is all for our property, and I believe it is uh lot three and and lot one, block twenty-seven, rules that fence.
Okay.
Uh that's a very nice fence, too. Uh item five, uh we will comply with the Recordation Act for the southern region. Item six is uh is the. Yep, that's the HOA, item seven.
Addressed.
Addressed. Uh item eight, I I don't know what P S E and G will require, we've we've done a uh a townhouse facility in the borough of Raritan, and they brought everything in on one side of the building, and they ran everything through the building. I'm not sure what they'll do, uh I'm not sure what P S E and G wants to do, I don't think they're gonna have a transformer pad, uh if anything, they'll have, you know, this drop pole, and maybe they'll come in, or off that existing pole that's out front, come underground.
Right, I mean, if it's gonna be a homeowners, my concern would be simple, that you would have utilities from one owner going across another owner, and easements and spaghetti in the ground.
Yep.
But with the homeowners, it basically have flexibility wherever you want, you get to put a pad down and transform, it becomes screening it, so.
Sure.
Should a pad down and transfer be required from P S E and G, it'll be screened and outside the sight line, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Item nine, the lot numbers we'll get from the Texas Assessor. Item ten will agree to provide that the the money for planting street trees, unless we can find two more places to plant trees, but it's pretty heavily planted at this time. Uh item eleven, we discussed. And.
It's almost the same thing, just clarifies what the actual
Right.
law states.
And that's, that's all I have, and we'll comply with all outside agency approvals with the with the application.
Anyone from the board have any questions of the testimony given by Mr. Cole?
My last thing, George, we are gonna do individual sanitary super laterals to the street for each unit, so we're not having, we're gonna have that separate. We've had instances where they've been combined in the town, and it creates a huge headache down the road in terms of, it gets clogged up, who clogged it? Who's fixing it?
That's my concern with those dreams.
Yeah.
You know, especially if you're gonna put a splay or a ready out there. We gotta get these down and.
Less root intrusion.
That's, that's. That's not that likely. Lot that. Don't think about it.
Yep, definitely.
Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Cole? Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you. Uh Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Mark Marion, he's our architect, and uh good morning.
Yes, Marion, uh you saw we scored the testimony you're about to give to this matter, will you be the true self, you got it? Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Mark Marion, M A R I O.
Very good, uh I'll I'll ask council to qualify you, I think we're uh I think before the book was for the floor, uh he's, I believe.
Yeah, and can you just get, I know the board's familiar with this, just give a brief of your qualifications, your your license status.
We're good with Mr. Marion, good to see you again.
Thank you very much. Mark, good evening, I understand that you have prepared architectural plans for the, as opposed to the applications, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you brought, I think you brought copies with you this evening to review with the board, um are they exactly what was filed with the board, or are there any corrections or additions to that?
They are, what was filed with the board dated through vision number one, two eighteen, twenty-two.
Fair, if you would just take the board uh through uh orientation of your architectural plans, including uh your rendering, your elevations, and description of the architectural features, and I'm sure the board will have questions, but you know, we could also address some comments and Mr. Cole's memory and the whole, thank you.
Sure, uh the Five Town House units, they are basically identical, some are flipped, we staggered them on the lot and made them parallel to Union Avenue. With the stepping, and what that allowed is to keep the side yard setbacks reduced, because if we oriented them to, to our thought, they would, the setbacks would be substantially less, especially on the north, south side of it. Again, they're all identical, about fifteen hundred square feet per unit, one car garage. The main level, this has a small foyer, powder room, and a living, dining, and kitchen area on the rear. The second floor is a green bedroom, two bath, there's also a laundry upstairs. And also on the first floor, there's decks to the rear, small decks, ten by ten. The ones that are, that embody each other, we are proposing a privacy wall. The decks would be of synthetic, you know, wood deck with synthetic decking, privacy wall, about six seventy feet tall, to separate the decks. Siding, final siding throughout, looking at the gray family, a dark roof, asphalt shingles, probably five inch exposure on the shingles for the siding. Metal doors, painted. Exterior lighting will just be residential in nature, we have to provide lights per code, front and rear at the doors. So, then we, we have to provide that for the code. And, let's see what else I got.
What about the HVAC?
We're proposing putting the HVAC unit, condensers in the rear, each one at the rear of each unit, and a air handler in the basement.
The water des heaters?
Likewise, we should have separate in this situation.
Fair enough.
From a fire point of view, they're townhouses, so there's a two hour rated wall that extends from the foundation all the way to the roof. That'll be sheetrocking per code, high rated sheetrock coating in this garage. These are really single family houses that are flooded, so they don't require suppression.
And Mark, I'm, I'm assuming we all have an issue with the, Mr. Cole, I think, ordering through page eleven, and his memorandum? I think you, I think you've hit on all of the three, I think you've hit all of those, although, well, comment A, with the three A, manufacturer of the windows, and how the light device was constructed.
There'll be grills, and there are vinyl windows. That manufacturer hasn't been internalized.
And internal grills, or snap-ins, or what do you mean by grills?
Uh, not, it'd be probably in snap-ins at best. Not the STLs or anything like that. So you're in the vinyls.
That's what Bill was saying, please.
Doesn't matter, either way, it doesn't matter.
The concern with the snap-ons of its rentals, they always get trashed.
We can do internal grills.
So if you got the internal grills, you just don't have that, that issue.
Correct. And they're easy to fit, as long as...
And I, Mr. Cole, also, I think his comment five, for utilities, the townhomes should be on the ground. I assume that's not an issue, correct?
Not for, maybe not.
And the plans will reflect that, I presume?
Yes, it's usually the engineer inside.
Mr. Cole, I think we, I think he addressed all your comments, do we miss anything?
Well, just the, the comment that on any large roof structure, I understand you have a two hour fire rating.
Right, yes.
But sometimes a large roof, the board likes to see it sprinkled up there. I understand what you're gonna say, the code doesn't require, I know, I know. However...
The attics are separated, because that firewall does extend all the way through to the roof, the bottom side of the roof, and since there's no parapet, there'll also be fire rating. Sheetrock on four feet, when they put swat fire rating plywood on, separating each one of those units.
The concern is, if you get cables running through and someone punch holes through it, and then you don't have that fire stop. I've been here for a while, so I, I, I'm just, I'm just to parry here for some of the members I've heard the last decade from the board, so...
Yeah. Yeah, what he said. A residential sprinkler system, this day and age, is not that costly. And probably New Jersey construction, where these places burn down, is on the back deck. If somebody's cooking chicken on the back deck, and they forget about it, it goes up the wall, it's into the eaves, goes across the roof, building's out of service.
I have seen that also, especially where you have continuous attics. Do you see that more in older...
No, no. Roadhouses. Modern, New Jersey modern construction sucks, and it, you know, these things burn down because of that. It's always the same, it's up the outside, across the roof, and down the...
Why don't you tell us that you really think that's true?
I'm just taking the shit, too.
We've had those conversations.
Yeah, it's plastic pipe, it's not a scheduled pipe, you can make it work.
So you're asking for a thirteen D?
Yeah.
Well, the pass, what we've called is a thirteen D modified.
Yeah.
To include the attic. So we're not looking at a, Ed, you might want to help here.
It's, it's problematic, you can't get a thirteen D in the attic.
Okay.
Because it doesn't, it's gotta be our system in the attic, you can't do that.
Where they use freon?
Yeah, it doesn't work well.
Oh, it doesn't work, I have a place.
And where would you set this, the whole suppression system, on the outside of the building?
It's off the domestic system.
Right, but don't you need a control valve or anything like that? Ties right in underground?
No, a thirteen.
Not the D system.
No, the D system, no.
No? I mean...
Yeah, it's, it's, not even those.
No, it's a PEX pipe, but I've seen issues with that, even in conduit, somebody tries to do something, it breaks that pipe, and then you have to...
Flood the hole.
Flood the hole.
So the problematic with the thirteen hour system is that somebody, that's what I'm saying, supply the whole space, so thirteen D, this comes off the plumbing, it doesn't...
Right.
Okay.
So with a thirteen D, you can't get it in the attic, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
It'll freeze.
Well, I think that's the concern with the attic.
In the end, it's about saving people, not buildings, I hate to say that, but that's...
I mean, that's, you're absolutely hundred percent, thirteen hour system, Ds are about people, not buildings, so...
It's people. So I understand the concern about attics, and yes, that's the way fires go, but it's all about giving people time to get out.
Yeah, the sprinklers.
That's, yeah, save the people, not the building. So, in terms of puddings, if you want thirteen D, it's not gonna go in the attic. I'm not a sprinkler guy, so I'll leave that to you.
That's the engineer.
You're better than I, you're better than I, but...
I mean, there is two hour fire rating all the way across the top, so if it, if you light up that one resin, it's gonna take theoretically two hours to get to the next, you know, unit.
The word is theoretically.
You're an engineer.
You have to qualify it, I mean, I don't know, it could be the wind, it could be the accelerant up there, I, I don't know.
Yeah, the grill fires are, that's many of the fires that are, are common on the decks.
Think on the rental side, you'll get, you have to work that into your tenants.
Yeah, I mean, we could not have grills in the back, I mean, I know propane tanks aren't even supposed to be right up against the half of the building, you know, we can state certain things in our H O A that they have to be off the deck, you know?
Ten foot rule, if I don't, it's just not...
It's open flame, it's just put it down, it's gonna freeze.
I'm going there every time.
Mr. Chairman, I think we would defer to your engineer and your, and your other board members as to what type of system would work best, and working with the applicant on that, because it sounds like there could be some technical issues, but I think the bottom line is the applicant's open to that. Yeah, try working with the board.
Do you get what they're reaching?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the D, the D is gonna be your, what you want.
I know.
Yeah, but that doesn't get you your attic, so...
That's, that's, that's the whole point, it's just why it's like, it's kinda...
Like, you can't put, you can't put a buggered grilled out back deck, anyway, don't put it light enough.
You can't, probably not. You can if it's an actual gas, but I wouldn't suggest that you make it a order, because propane tanks, usually they're required to be, again, how many feet from the, the structure?
Anything else with, with Marion?
Are you good, Mark?
I am good, Mr. Marion, just had a question, fifteen hundred square feet per unit, three bedrooms?
Yes.
Basement?
Yes, there is a...
No?
No basement?
Don't believe so. You did a plan.
Well, I think you have one or none, it's a, most of it was a little bit out of the grounds, the flight fee out of the ground, we had stairs set up, so it's kinda high, so when it's...
I didn't see a basement. Yeah, I didn't see a basement.
I didn't see, I would put a basement.
I didn't see a basement, but we, we could put one under the kitchen every day if you want. Just can't put it under the garage.
No, no basement, there's never a basement under the garage.
I know, that's... Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, huh, clear on that.
I don't know. Typically for townhouses, we don't have basements, right, the garage? You have the garage, crawl space.
This would be a crawl space.
Right, crawl space on the other side, right garage.
So, a question for you, the garage, is it big enough to store both the car and the garbage cans? So that there's gonna be no garbage cans that are on the exterior of the townhouse? We don't want to get attention.
Question. The garages are twenty feet deep, cars are typically not twenty feet long, so...
And then how about outside storage? Because the three units that are inside, there's not gonna be no outside storage unless it's in the back, but how about the ones in the north and south?
We have no provisions for outside storage. It's just gonna be a lot. And the, whatever people put in their attics.
Is the attic, is the attic a pull down stair?
That's typically what we provide, is a pull down stair. If there are, if there was no basement in this unit, then you would typically see air handler in that. So servicing that would, the stair would be helpful.
Any other questions on Mr. Marion?
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony just given by Mr. Marion? Okay.
Now, since Mr. Cole can't testify for me, I'll call John Chadwick. Our next witness is John Chadwick, who's our, who's our planner, we'll have to have him supported.
Indeed, Mr. Chadwick, indeed, good to see you again. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes.
In the interest of full disclosure, Mr. Chadwick, I have on countless occasions, taught seminars for the New Jersey Planning Officials and Programs of the League of Municipalities, so we, we do work together. He's also been a consultant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law Drafting Committee, which I'm chairman, and he has served invaluable, as an invaluable contributor to so many aspects of the land use planning profession, so... But I, I have worked with him in the past, I just wanted to disclose that to the board, and a volunteer being a fellow...
Thank you. You want me to, I mean, obviously you know what we are, we're gonna...
He just was.
Yeah, right, I was just gonna say. And by the way, I've been to those seminars, so...
You met, you survived.
I survived.
I already swore you in.
John, would you just give a brief CD, your special qualifications, which is for the record?
We just did.
Fair enough.
Okay. The license is good standing.
Uh, thank God for that. John, good evening. Now, have you brought any exhibits that, that we have not submitted, that you would like? I just saw you hand it out that we need that, Mark.
This is a narrow photograph, which identifies the site and the surrounding areas.
Fair enough, so, tell me, what is that, A?
A seven.
A seven, okay.
It's enough for everyone.
Well, initial A. Uh, that's fine. If you would, uh... John, if you would, I guess, describe the exhibit, and also would you provide your planning testimony in support of the use variances released, or, I know you have some thoughts also on the, on the bulk of the C variances as well, thank you very much.
I think you went through the range of variances early on with Dave, and the basic issue was, in terms of the C variances, whether they're subsumed within the basic issue we hear, that this is not a permitted use townhouse in the property. Everything else is part of that. So I'm not going to go down through all of the C variances, they're identified in, in Mr. Cole's report. If there's any that you wish me to speak to at the end, please ask me. But it comes down, you now know this project pretty well, the site is being remediated as we sit here, well, this afternoon anyway. And it's effectively a remediation, private redevelopment project. If you go back and look at all of the recent borough planning studies, they're talking about rebuilding the borough. Some cases, big projects, some cases, small projects. This is an infill, it's a little strange area, we've got Bridgewater on one side of the street, and the borough on the other side of the street. There's only actually patches, these only are residential for most of the area along the front edge. If you're looking at the aerials, you can see where the quick check is, cuts a bridge water. As you move west, you cover the various kinds of uses. Across the street from us is, I really couldn't figure out how many units were in there, one big building, I think there's more. And on the other building, there's three buildings there. Right across the street, I think there's six units in that combination structure back there. So effectively, you've got multifamily across the street. On the borough side, that's all zone residential. But you start out with the Motor Works and the Strip Mall, next to us is the Medical Arts Building, it's a little sales sign out in front of it, but it's medical arts building. So you keep going along, which you get out of the Lutheran Church, if you started. So even though it's own, single family, and one of the aspects of this R two zone is that community residences, roaming and hoarding houses are also permitted or petition reasons. And that's what your plan is. Most of the documents, if you look at the borough, focused downtown, that's ended up. That's been the focus for forty years. As the remaining parts of the town are very stable. The neighborhood to the rear of us is vacuum, perfectly maintained, right along twenty-eighth, that's a lot. You've got this site, you've got a site across the street, down the way, Bridgewater, both of them derelict. This basic project does, it's, it's, in my opinion, particularly suited because of all of the different components that are here. You've got an applicant who is principal business and livelihood is cleaning up sites, who is going to be the developer, as you just described. You've also got a piece of property that's large enough to accommodate what is here, and is explained by both George and Mark, in terms of what, how it sits, how it fits on the property. We have enough parking, we're reducing overall drainage, we're fixing up the outsides of this property. That meets the test for particular suitability. You get into the next test, outlined in, in Mr. Cole's report is advancement of the basic purposes of zoning is outlined. You've heard this a hundred times from planners, they always give you the same letters. A, G, I, and M, sometimes you put L. Always the same, one is appropriate location, looks good, needs light and air, and a cooperation between the public and private parties. I'm not belittling these, but that's what this does. It, it, it's a track, very attractive building, it's got jogs in it, that usually you see the townhouses, the front car... It, it, it's a track, very attractive building, it's got jogs in it, that usually you see the townhouses, the front part of the building is set back every two units. The back part of the building is a flat wall, not here. It's, it's turned, it's twisted, it's got roof lines coming across the front doors, across the garage, I think it's a very, very attractive building. You go into the next step, is, is, is there any significant impacts to the zoning plan? Well, first of all, we're starting out with a gas station that's been abandoned, and we're replacing with brand-new housing. Your plan calls for single-family housing, that's what we're proposing, attached, with single-family individual units. All of those things concur with what your plan describes and directs under the zoning plan. The ability for the applicant to accommodate the requests of the various professionals that have been demonstrated all night long. As for certain drains should be worked out, they will be worked out, as for in terms of fire protection, they will work with you. I think there was a question in terms of storage, it was sort of left up in the air, talking with the client, you can easily put storage underneath the back deck, you're gonna be excavating soil anyway, so we can figure out how to pour water, basically, in a container, under a ten-by-ten area, so. All of those things are kind of like common sense, how you work them out. So in my judgment, we certainly meet the test for particular suitability, we certainly advance the purposes of municipal land use law that the audience I described. In terms of negative impacts, we are in a mixed land use corridor, both on the Bridgewater side of the street and our side of the street. We're an infill, we don't change that. The basic change here is getting rid of that shack, buildings on the property. With the editing jurisdiction on the other side of the street, you can get to that. They're competing as to the equals. Conclusion. Benefits clearly outweigh negative aspects, the negative aspects, in my judgment, have been addressed through the vetting of this project and the priorities. The legal project should be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you very much.
Anybody from the board have any questions of Mr. Chadwick? Anyone from the audience have any questions or testimony just given by Mr. Chadwick?
John, very succinct. Very succinct.
It's like Michael. Okay, thank you.
Excuse us.
They're setting you up for something. Have any additional presentation or something?
No, I do not, but I know if you're gonna open it up to the public or.
We're willing to.
Yeah, I hear that. I'll wait till then.
Okay, very good.
Anyone from the public have any question or comments? Yes.
I would like to see a picture of what it's going to look like, is that the right panel?
This would be the front?
You will be facing. You will be facing.
So, the end of the building, which is like this side here.
Talked to my client, I keep warming up the idea to unfinished basements, in terms of storage.
If that one is easier for storage, I mean, I'll be excavating pretty much it anyway. Groundwater, I know definitively is five feet below grade, I have enough wells and two years of documentation to prove it. So, I'm only gonna be three feet below grade, because the building comes out, so I'm not, it'd be fairly easy.
Anyone else? Someone like to move the, close the public portion, move second to all favor?
I agree.
Board, what's your pleasure? First of all, we have to see what we have, Cliff, we've got the conditions we have.
Okay, and I presume the applicant's counsel, on my own issue, I'd like to make Mr. Cole's report in compliance there with the condition of approval.
Absolutely.
You know, mine may have been modified in the course of testimony.
Yeah, I think, I think George and Mark went through each, Mark and I went through each of the questions, so, who we noted and agreed to.
All right, applicant, the conditions that I give to start are as follows, the applicant will establish a homeowner's association, which is gonna be what's called a, you know, horizontal property machine, like essentially a condominium community or a, so, well, that's what I would call it.
Yeah, it would be a condominium, a homeowner's association, and we would provide recovery documents to you.
You will provide these to me for, for review and approval?
Yes.
Okay, the, you will provide, there had been a discussion about this, and I'm not sure we discussed provision of an as-built lighting survey, but it sounds like you, Michael, you didn't seem to think that was necessary, or?
No, that to, to do the, to baseline the existing lighting, and only put lighting where it's necessary, is what we're saying.
All right.
Now, the lighting is gonna be in the course with the borough ordinance for residence response.
All right, there'll be a fire suppression system for the buildings?
I thought you were gonna discuss that.
Yeah, you. Yeah, I think, Mr. Gibbons, I think the issue was, I know we talked about the thirteen D, I guess, or, how, I think from a technical standpoint, we may want Mr. Cole to weigh in on that, and maybe your board, I don't know that we're, we can sit here tonight and say what we're gonna design specifically and how that's gonna work. I think generally, you could say that the applicant will read to an appropriate fire suppression system, and work with the board's professionals and other borough officials, or.
I think I suggest that you, you, you'll, you'll fashion a fire suppression system for the review and approval of the board's planner and engineer.
Works for me.
Who works in conjunction, obviously, with, with our fire officials and.
Yes, I was gonna say the fire official would wanna weigh in on that.
Of course, and.
What's that?
He's sitting right behind you.
No, I know.
He's had any comments on it? Right now, sweetie, this is bad.
I didn't wanna speak or anything, so, but as a condition, Mr. Gibbons, I think I agree with you.
Okay, that's fine, no, I, that, I think that, that's very pragmatic. And I, I have, those, those were the conditions I had come up with, the standard conditions, which we apply, you probably heard me discussing this with a previous applicant, that, you know, all fees are paid, all compliances, all compliances obtained with all county, state, federal regulations, which is important when it comes to things like our ASIUS and fire. And there will be a, I believe that's the extent of the conditions of approval.
Mr. Gibbons, I know we talked about storage, and so what the, what the applicant's suggesting is that, I guess, we would, we would provide for basements.
I'll be excavating three feet, the building comes out five feet, so I could easily put a basement there, I'm not gonna be doing much, and it'll give storage for each tenant.
That would seem to be.
Is the condition of the unfinished basements?
Yeah.
Yes, but we would have to submit revised architectural plans for review.
Would be partial basements with a garage.
With a garage, correct, correct, and that should provide enough ample storage.
Yeah, the other thing is garbage cans, and now you're gonna get recycling cans, they have two, so none of that should be on the outside, it all should be included in the garage.
Yes.
And I don't know what the board's, I usually have this comment about, I thought it was satellite dishes. If the board, they shouldn't be on the front of the, of the townhouses, I don't know what the situation is, but a systemic comment, I don't know how the board feels about that. If anything?
So, Cliff, I don't know if you heard this, but the recycling cans and garbage cans that we put on the inside of the garage, it's not stored on the outside.
I don't know, they mentioned that. It'll be in the inside of the garage, of the garage door, right?
And we could provide that as a, as a requirement in the, in the bylaws.
It'll be in your H O A, yeah.
That way, it's part of recorded documents.
Well, another thing we talked about, I think you might wanna do this, is have a general prohibition for open fires and.
Yeah.
Cooking facilities, I mean, and that's not a precedent, I live in a, I live in a condominium facility that bans them completely, so.
And most, most communities do that.
With turkey fries? The turkey fries?
No.
Pick, pick up the turkey from away from.
Drop a frozen turkey in there.
Get somebody else to do it, and then bring it to, bring it to the table.
You know, Cliff, thinking about this, and Mike, these are three bedroom units, you're probably gonna have kids, kids have bicycles and stuff like that, maybe a place to put that stuff.
Well, again, I think the, the governing documents are gonna have a laundry list of things, for example, all garbage and recycling cans stored in the garage area. Bicycles should not be stored outside, the property should be properly maintained, and, and, it shouldn't be cluttered, I mean, those kinds of things will all get put into the government, I mean, I'm speaking layman-like, but your, your intentions will all be set forth in those documents, and Mr. Gibbons will have a chance to review those.
Mr. Chairman, just a thought, you were, weren't inclined to request bike racks? Again, this isn't Hoboken, and, and, you know, and, and there, there, yeah, bike guy for everybody. You're not swarming, so.
There should be enough pipe in the garage if you wanna hang them.
Yeah.
And if they wanna, they can walk around back and put them under the decks, or something like that.
And don't forget, the H O A has an obligation, if people are violating those bylaws, they are enforced, and they could be penalized, I don't think we're looking to do that, but.
Fine.
We're fine, there you go, we're fine.
The details will be in the draft that the.
Correct.
And I'll full review.
And I'll review and approve.
Yeah, I lived in a condominium unit development when I first got married, and I was on the rules and, and covering committee, and we had meetings once a week, you would not leave. So, and the key is really enforcement, so I think with the homeowner's association, I think a lot of that is alleviated.
Well, also in terms of common areas, you, you know, the association fees need to be sufficient enough to pay or all those things.
Of course.
That's part of a practical approach to it.
I agree.
That's fine.
Mr. Gibbons, I think you got all the conditions.
I think we got them all, yeah, I, I, I thank you for the additional ones, I was running fast, so, we got them all, and I'm comfortable now with a care resolution that will incorporate everything. Is there anything, you know, we had the, trying to think. Have you, the board, does the board have any questions for myself or for the applicant's counsel?
Oh, we did that.
All right, I just wanna make sure.
We need to work pretty dead.
Yeah. I think we can, can, I'll put this to a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Would someone like to move the, someone like to move the.
I will make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Put the conditions set forth in record, our standard, standard conditions of approval.
It's been moved, second, any comments?
I'm glad to see it's actually cleaned up.
At first, I didn't think five years would be good, but now you can miss me. Roll call, please.
Arda Dare.
Yes.
Roberta Carpanis.
Yes.
Brandon Dinsky.
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin.
Yes.
Richard O'Neil.
Yes.
Ed Allen.
Yes.
John Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I will board the preparation of the resolution withdrawal.
Very good. I, I would like to just acknowledge what's saying by the board, I want to understand, we could be just more, for a vacation, something, and. I also want to wish her all the best for her retirement, and, and, so you think we're all blessed.
Thank you very much. Hard to take five. We're appreciating the work that's here, since we grab.
I'm sure, I'm sure you want this right.
There, you'll see, that's the children's river, that's where the two rivers.